Hello, I'm Mayor Drew Combs and welcome to the August 12th regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff, and members of the public participating virtually and in City Council chambers. Please note, public comment speaker time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. Tonight, we have in-person interpretation services available. Please visit the table in the back for a headset. For those in virtual attendance, please note that there is a globe icon near the hand feature on your screen. Our interpreters this evening are Gabriela Aom, Angelica Villagrande Gonzalez, Annabella Tidona, and Angela Thillen. Thank you all for your time and services today.
Muy buenas noches. Tenemos servicios de interpretación disponibles en español, tanto en persona como de manera virtual. Si necesitan interpretación al español, para aquellos que se encuentren en persona, por favor, pasen por acá para brindarles el equipo, y para aquellos que nos acompañan de forma virtual, por favor, seleccionen el icono del globo que está cerca del icono de la mano en la pantalla. Nuestras interpretes de esta noche son Gabriela Saya Salón, Angelica Villagrande Gonzalez, Annabella Tidona, y Angela Thillen. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce City Council members and staff present. In the City Council chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, and City Council members Jeff Schmidt, Cecilia Taylor, and Jennifer Wise. Staff present includes City Manager Justin Murphy, Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti, City Attorney Nero Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. City Clerk Han, would you please provide instructions to the City Council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs, and again echoing a welcome to our August 12th regular City Council meeting. For members of the public who wish to provide comment on an item on tonight's agenda, after the mayor calls for comment on that item, for those of you in person, we ask that you complete a speaker card at that back table and return it to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are participating virtually, you'll engage that hand feature at that time. That includes my instructions. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Clerk Heron. Agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order or any requests from City Council members. Does the City Council wish to pull any items from the concerned calendar or informational items? Okay. Does the City Council desire to modify the order of agenda items? With that, we'll move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the City Council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the City Council once under the public comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited to two minutes if there are more than 10 speakers. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The City Council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda, and therefore, the City Council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment for an item not on tonight's agenda, if you are in person, you can return a speaker card to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, go ahead and engage that hand feature at this time. Looks like we're currently at eight speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. I've got a few more cards coming in. Okay, so Mayor Combs, it looks like we are just at 10 speakers. So with that, we will go to the two minutes per speaker. And our first speaker will be Peter Banzaff, followed by Michelle Huang.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, Council members Schmidt, Taylor, and Wise. It's good to see you. It's been a while since I've been at this podium. I'm actually here to express some appreciation for the council's vote for the parking ordinance that was a few months ago. I wanted to report out that we've had a dramatic cleanup of our neighborhood and a resurgence of leasing activity, including our building. So we're in a position now where we're getting pretty close to a new lease at our property, which is, you know, dramatic improvement from where we were a few months ago. So this is a great collaboration, a lot of emphasis on City Manager Murphy and Chief Norris, and I just want to say thank you. It's not easy to go through these activities solo, but I feel that this council really stepped up and helped us, so thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Michelle Huang, followed by Keith Quiggins.
Thank you, Mayor and Council members. My name is Michelle Huang. I'm 16 and I live in District 5. With school starting soon, it's time we turn our attention to an issue that affects hundreds of families in our city every single day: school parking safety. I'm here today because every student deserves to arrive at school safely, and all parents deserve peace of mind during morning drop-off and after-school pickup. Let's face it, most, if not all, people are grumpy in the morning before or after coffee. What could be worse than driving your kid to school, then needing to face congestion, double parking, the cars blocking sidewalks, and students weaving in between vehicles just to get to class? These are daily hazards, and we see it in most of our schools. I go to school in Palo Alto, and one of the sources of frustration in the morning among all of my classmates, now especially that we all have our licenses, is the traffic situation. And I trust that it's the same here, too. And with more families driving or walking their kids to school, the risks are only growing. According to national data, thousands of children are injured in school zones each year, and it big causes unsafe parking behavior and poor traffic design. These incidents are preventable and avoidable. So we ask that you improve road markings around school zones, making it crystal clear where it is and isn't safe to stop. Sometimes there will be badly painted spots or faded spots, and making it clear will make all the difference. Two, implement daylighting at intersections near schools, so drivers can actually see crossing students. Last year, I spoke at this council meeting advocating for more daylighting, and since then, it has become official California state law. So then, it's up to our representatives to implement changes to reflect the new policy. These are just some protections that the students in our area suggest, because no one should get hurt by simply trying to go to school, and our wonderful parents definitely should not need to go cross-eyed while looking at a traffic system early in the morning. Let's please start the new school year off right by making school zones safer and set the scene for a great year of learning for our students. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is Keith Quiggins, followed by Jackie Sebrian.
Good evening, City Council. I'm wanting to talk about a parking issue that we have in Menlo Park beyond the buildings that they want to put down here. Is that there was a recent ordinance passed that prohibits parking in downtown overnight by anyone, including businesses that are located here that have work vans, and they traditionally have been able to park overnight. This has caused an issue because the work vans do delivers and whatnot. I've emailed a couple times in the last about this issue, and I think this should be an easy 10-minute fix. I know it's to prevent RVs from parking, but it makes it bad for businesses and it makes it bad for, you know, say, somebody who wants to go have a cocktail downtown, and maybe they have one too many, and they're trying to be a responsible person and hop in an Uber to go home, and they'll come back in the morning only to find a $50 ticket on their car. This easily should have been fixed two months ago when this issue came up, either exempt downtown businesses or create a permit that they can pay to have their vans stay overnight. A couple weeks ago, one of the city employees, Fran Den, had a conversation with one of my work neighbors and told them that they should ask someone like myself, who pays for private parking directly behind my business, that they should ask me if they could use my spots overnight, which is completely ridiculous when this is literally a 10-minute fix that you could do tonight. Please take time to improve your relationship with downtown businesses and prove to them that you actually care about the business that we create here in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Jackie Sebrian, followed by Victorino Roman.
Hi, City Council members. I'm Jackie Sebrian, and I'm here, I'd like to speak about the license plate reader contract. I watched the City Council meeting when it was debated, and I agreed with many of the concerns that council members raised at that time and understood that there would be some systems in place so that we would know who was accessing the data. And I don't know that it's the same, but based on that recent article in the Almanac, I certainly have concerns about who may or may not be accessing the data. On behalf, at least for Atherton, of ICE and HSI and Customs and Border Patrol, like, I would just prefer to know whether our tax dollars are being used for sort of state-sanctioned stalking, and if so, could we please stop that? So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Next up is Victorino Roman, followed by Alberto T. García.
Good evening. I'm here with the same problem that we got a new building, city building. We don't have any space for another pool table. We don't have any place where to talk, because behind there is the lady place. And we are here, and, you know, sometimes we talk some words, and there is no room for the ladies. So I would like to know if it's possible, you know, put one table for the domino play, play the domino, and other two chairs, you know, to sit, because we don't have just two or three. Sometimes, sometimes we don't have nothing. So excuse me for the, or say this problem again. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker is Alberto T. García, followed by Glafira García.
Buenas tardes. Soy Alberto T. García. Vivo en Bellhaven, Menlo Park. Solo quiero recordarles y decirles que la petición que metimos los seniors de Bellhaven no ha avanzado mucho. Solo llegaron las sillas y el piano. Les pedimos de la manera más humilde y atenta que nos den el espacio que necesitamos y las mesas de juego de dominó y billar. Les pedimos jefes que nos entiendan en español y tengan voluntad de trabajar con seniors de bajos recursos y deshabilitados. Los seniors pedimos respeto básico por lo menos, y seguimos preguntando dónde está el personal que nos atendía y organizaba los eventos. Nos prometieron todo igual, y nada es igual. A estas alturas de la vida, los seniors no pensamos ser parte de un cuento feliz. Solo queríamos ser felices sin tanto cuento, porque estamos pagando el precio de decisiones que los seniors no tomamos. Han acabado con nuestro bienestar. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Alberto T. García, and I live in the Bellhaven community of Menlo Park. And I am here to remind you of our request as seniors and the fact that we have not seen any progress in that request. The only thing that has arrived are the piano and the chairs. So we humbly request that you please give us the space that we need, the tables to play domino and pool table. We ask that you please give us bosses or people in charge who speak Spanish and that know how to work with low-income seniors and seniors who are going through disabilities. We respectfully make this request, and we ask you, where is the staff that was supposed to organize and coordinate all of the events? You promised us that everything would stay the same, yet nothing has stayed the same. At this point in our lives, we don't want to be part of a story, you know, that will make us happy. We just want to be happy in our lives. So as seniors, we are now paying the price of the decision that you made.
Thank you. Next up is Glafira García, followed by Judith Schwartz.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Glafira García. Vivo en la, soy residente de Bellhaven. Voy a hablar ahora de 30 de julio, Julio. A las 10:45 de la mañana, se prendieron las alarmas en el edificio Bellhaven. Estábamos nueve personas en clases en el segundo piso, y nadie nos avisó. Si hubiera pasado algo, éramos personas muertas. Randel, el manager, no tiene personal entrenado para que ayude a los seniors, ni un plan de evacuación. Y el director Chan solo se preocupa por dividir a la comunidad. Queremos un director que trabaje para la comunidad. Y quitó el personal que nos ayudaba y nos hacía eventos especiales, que nos hacían vivir a los seniors. Quitó las clases de foot hill that were gratis. Quitó, que era la clase de cerámica, yoga, tai chi, acupuntura, consejería, y guitarra. Y no nos han dado ninguna de esas clases. Ahora solo hay una mujer, que es la autorizó Randel, y da solamente tres clases por semana, una cada día, y no es maestra. Queremos clases autorizadas, de maestras autorizadas. Y queremos que, por favor, haya el plan de evacuación, porque también en ese edificio hay niños. Si no lo hacen por nosotros, siquiera por los niños, sean justos, por favor. Queremos que haya, que sean justos y sean personas con nosotros. Ya tenemos mucho tiempo pidiéndoles estas cosas, y no han hecho nada por nosotros. Muchas gracias.
Good evening. My name is Glafira García, and I am a resident of Bellhaven. Tonight, I would like to talk about what happened on July 30th at 10:45 in the morning. What happened was that the alarms went off at the Bellhaven building, and there were nine people, nine of us, on the second floor, and no one alerted us. So if something had happened, we would have been dead. Randel, the manager, he does not have any staff that is trained to help us. There is no evacuation plan, and the director Chan has just tasked himself with dividing the community. We want people in charge that know how to work with us and with the community. He has told his staff, and he has removed, rather, the staff that was helping us, that was coordinating special events for us, that was helping us feel better about our lives. There were classes, foot hill classes, that were free. That's no longer happening. There were yoga classes, tai chi classes, counseling, acupuncture, guitar classes, ceramics, and other classes as well. The manager, Randel, there's a woman that he has authorized to be there to give us classes three times a week, but this person isn't even a teacher. So we really want classes that are given by authorized teachers, and we want and need an evacuation plan. Even there were kids there that day, so if you're not going to do it for us, then at least do it for the kids. Be fair and be just with us. This has been a long time coming. This is a request that we've made multiple times in the past, and there's nothing that you have done about it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Judith Schwartz, followed by Cecilia Vilches.
Good evening. So I've been following the recent discussions that have happened about aquatics, and I'm glad to say our coach, Becky Eastman, is going to be coming up next to tell you about what is so wonderful about our community. And I think I just keep getting confused by the rhetoric and some of the conversations that have been happening. We are living in difficult times where leaders in government are choosing to dismantle programs that effectively support our citizens and denigrate loyal people who provide competent service. It makes no sense to me, with all the real challenges that you're facing, your city, what is driving you to be unwilling to come up with a good solution here? When aquatics is next on the agenda, would you please help us understand what your priority is when it comes to the Bellhaven pool? Are you trying to break even on your expenses? Are you trying to get more local residents to use the pool? Or is punishing Tim Sheperd such an overwhelming objective that you're willing to sacrifice the great community that we have at Burgess and that we want to see happen at Bellhaven? And it doesn't do anything to actually help the residents at Bellhaven. So it seems like the conversations are more focused on the lead certification of the building and declaring Menlo Park a sanctuary city than you are on making the Bellhaven Community Campus a safe haven for residents who are really under threat. And I listened to the people that are here today, and, I mean, we are in really scary times, and I think the level of support that's needed for the Bellhaven Community Campus is a tremendous opportunity to be creative in what can be done. Okay? And it's not just about, it's obviously not just about the pool. It's a broader issue, and so I hope when you talk about it next, you will give us some clarification on this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Cecilia Vilches, followed by Rebecca Eastman.
Buenas tardes. Consejo de Menlo Park. Mi nombre es Elia Vilchi. Soy ama de familia. La razón por la que estoy aquí tengo dos hijos, uno de 19 y una que va a entrar a la universidad. Ellos van a requerir un vehículo más, y yo vengo de Willow. En Willow, se hizo un edificio para bajos ingresos. Mis hijos eran pequeños, y había mejores, anteriores mejores parkings extras para las viviendas viejas. Pero ahora el edificio nuevo no quiere rentar a los chicos que están creciendo, y aquí la policía nada más nos está permitiendo para un carro por noche, dos dólares. Y el día que no podemos venir a comprar los tickets, tenemos que mover los carros a Ispalo Alto. He ido anteriormente a muchas de las reuniones de Bellhaven. La gente misma se queja de los residentes, que nosotros somos una carga, pero yo pienso que no lo somos. Mis hijos están educando. Una hija con excelentes calificaciones, un hijo que estudia, trabaja, y llegan cansados, y no hay un parking extra. Y yo deseo que haya una oportunidad, aunque sea anual, el parqueadero en lo que ellos acaban la carrera. La manager de ahí no apoya. Hay parqueaderos bastantes adentro, pero ella no apoya para nada. Al contrario, tratamos de no quejarnos para no ser echados de esa residencia con la situación del alto ingreso de los departamentos. Somos una comunidad callada, con miedo, y que no está aquí. Pero yo vine por mis hijos y el valor, porque los amo. A veces muevo los carros en la mañana, en la noche, y es muy estresante. Quisiera saber si hay un cambio para los chicos que están estudiando y que tengan pruebas de que están estudiando, para que ellos tengan un mejor futuro en este país. Gracias.
Hi, my name is Elia Vilchi, and I am here, I'm a stay-at-home mom. I have two kids. I have a 19-year-old and one that is about to start college. And we have just one other vehicle, and I come from Willow, so we are in the low-income building. And so before, I used to be able to find more parking for whenever we had to, when we had the older building. And now with the new building, they won't let us rent out any parking spots. And I have to buy a ticket that is $2 every time I have an extra car that I need to park there. And so whenever I can buy a ticket, I have to go all the way to Ispalo Alto. And this is something that is not sustainable. The residents there are, I know that there's talks, and I've been to meetings, and the residents complain that we're a burden, but I don't believe that we are a burden. My kids are going through their education, they're good kids. One is working, and the other one has really good grades, and they are just tired at the end of the day when they arrive home, and there's no extra parking for them. And I think we need to give them the opportunity, even if it's an annual parking that we have to pay. And the managers are, the managers definitely not helping. There's just lots of parking in that area, but we have absolutely no support. And we don't want to complain. We try not to complain, actually, because the area is for high-income individuals, and so we feel like we're being silenced and we're scared. I'm here because I love my kids, I want to support them, and every morning, if I have to, I move the cars. But this is a very stressful situation, and I wonder if there's a possibility that we can change this for our kids, for kids that are going through their education, so that they can have a better future. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Rebecca Eastman, followed by E. Planet.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Rebecca Eastman, and I have the privilege of working with Tim Sheperd for the past 18 years, servicing both. I've stayed quiet until now, not because I didn't care, but because I didn't feel like my words would hold any weight. But this moment demands that I speak. A few mornings ago, I walked onto our facility at 5:45 in the morning. I overheard a simple yet profound conversation between two lap swimmers. One asked, "Do you know how Anne is doing? I haven't seen her in a while." The other one replied, "She's doing well. She just had surgery, but should be back in the pool in about a month." Anne is a 91-year-old master swimmer and a beloved part of this community. That brief conversation made something click inside me. This isn't just a place to swim, it's a home, it's a lifeline, a community that looks out for each other every single day. There's a reason I've stayed with Team Sheperd for nearly two decades. It's a family he's created, not just among staff, but among members of all backgrounds. This community is irreplaceable. Let me share something deeply personal with you. A year and a half ago, I gave birth to a beautiful baby girl. The next day, my son was diagnosed with leukemia. That moment shattered my world. But it was this pool, this community, these people, that kept me grounded. They fed me, they supported me, they asked me daily and sincerely how my family was doing. Not just the master swimmers, but AquaFit members, lap swimmers, and parents of young swimmers, they all showed up. And it's not just my story. The pool community is full of people walking through unimaginable struggles: cancer battles, the death of a spouse, losing a job, going through a divorce, or recovering from injury. When life knocks them down, it's where they come. They come to swim, yes, but more importantly, they come to talk and sort through their emotions, to be distracted, to laugh again, to simply to forget for an hour. This pool is a sacred space where healing happens, in its waters and on the pool deck. It's where people feel whole again, and that kind of connection doesn't just happen by accident. It happens through years of care. It happens through years of care, trust, and consistency, all of which Team Sheper has cultivated. I understand this financial concerns, especially related to Bellhaven, are driving these conversations. But removing or replacing the very structure that he has created, such a strong and healing community, is not the answer. There must be other solutions, creative ones, collaborative ones, ones that don't sacrifice community or to solve a spreadsheet. I ask you to take a step back to really consider the ripple effects of this decision. Are you solving a problem or creating a much larger one by removing the heart of something that works and works so beautifully? This is not just a pool operation. It's about people's lives, healing, belonging. And you, as our elected officials, have the opportunity to protect something truly sacred. Please don't take that lightly. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is a virtual speaker, as E. Planet. You should be able to unmute your mic at this time. It doesn't look like we have an audio for you just yet. So we're looking for audio for E. Planet. You've sounded a little far away. Try again. So looking for E. Planet. Are you able to engage your microphone? E. Planet is our final speaker. Okay, go right ahead.
And it's pretty important. One aspect is related to that stuff. I don't think it's going to make it easy anytime soon though, because I've been doing this for several years. And you know something related to EIC group, electronic intelligence, which is pretty important to the Silicon Valley community. That should be making a big buzz. It may have already, because I tried doing that. We do this fiction. Also, clearly, we have a lot of Hispanic community here. And I just, I'm chewing back a lot of it, but a lot of things are going on in our country right now. And I'm going to send you guys next thing, some things to why America has the kind of relations that it has with Mexico. When we're doing things, the other companies all around the world that we could be doing in our backyard. And it's just, we went from a society that didn't lock the doors to the highest in the country in the world, which two or three crimes have not even reported. And it's partly I'm dealing with some music and some corruption thing. You know, no direct conflict, rules, music as a coincidence. Exactly what happened, starting with the Beatles. And right now, I'm dealing with, well, actually, I submitted documents and made comments to Irvine City Council in March, I think maybe twenty-six, I made a letter about that, where they made criminal corrections that face value. And then just at you, for just last week, the city council unrecalled me when I said a few things that you knew I was going to talk about related to Taylor Swift. And I didn't violate the not-on-the-jurisdiction thing either. So that's a lot of stuff I'm dealing with. I just mostly just thank you for your time right now. The comments that you have should be really interesting to the community as well as the national experience. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, and that does conclude our speakers for items not on tonight's agenda. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. I would encourage Mr. Understriker to submit his verbal comment as written comment. I don't know if I quite understood it. It could just be me. But to make sure that the message he wants to convey is clearly conveyed, again, I would encourage him to submit written comment to the council, to the council's email alias. Under the rubric of providing general feedback or information on the public comments, first, thank you everyone who provided general public comment. It was a wide variety of topics. I will, I do want to highlight and make it clear, I think as the public commenter did, that the article in connection with license plate reader data was about Atherton and not about Menlo Park's program. Atherton's program is more longstanding. And then Menlo Park's program. And I think as was highlighted and mentioned, there was a robust debate about the data, how long it could be retained in connection with Menlo Park. And so just wanted to highlight that distinction, which I don't think is missed, but I do think is important to highlight. I do also want to mention that in my time in city government and on city council, I have come to realization there are no ten-minute fixes on anything. And I appreciate the concern of downtown businesses about inconvenience that they had and how that might be changed. But there are real issues of policy and policy being consistent. And that when you provide exceptions, like what is the rubric? And what is the logic under which you're providing an exception? Because they can promise you, one population wants an exception, other populations will also want an exception. And then you are in the position of why did you enact the rule in the first place? And so that's a discussion the council has to have. And so that's not going to be a ten-minute discussion. Because there are very legitimate policy issues that are at play when you have that discussion. Because like I say, lots of people want exceptions when they see rules that inconvenience them. And that's, I think, where we're at with that issue. But I still appreciate the engagement, continue to advocate for the position, but realize that there is a discussion that needs to be had. Again, I appreciate that there still seems to be some ongoing concerns and issues as it relates to the senior center. I do want to say that it seems like the concerns are a bit of a moving target. They seem to expand and grow. And that actually provides me with some concern about their legitimacy. And again, this is just me speaking for myself and providing general feedback that it seems like this, there is a consistent sense of unhappiness with the center. I can't undo that. The center is the center. And a consistent unhappiness with some staff. If there are issues with staff, there is a process by which to present that feedback. And I would encourage you to utilize it. Certainly, you always have the ability and right to come and speak before for city council. And you should do that. But I also, again, my sense and understanding has been that like there has been this, like I say, consistently moving target about what is the thing or set of things that could bring some sense of resolution to the issues there in the senior center. Regarding aquatics, we have talked a lot about aquatics. We will talk a lot more about aquatics. And I just wanted to be clear. I hear you. I appreciate the feedback of aquatics. Again, something that is also not a ten-minute fix, not a hundred-minute fix, maybe not a thousand-minute fix. I don't know. It is, you know, really differing opinions. And that discussion has been had on this council, at this dais. And like I say, it will continue to be had in the months ahead. So those were, I think, just some general feedback I wanted to provide in connection with the public comment. Appreciate everyone who provided public comment and always encourage people to take advantage of that, that ability to provide public comment and to advocate for the issue. That's important to them. Wanted if none of my council colleagues had anything they wanted to add, then I will go on to presentations and proclamations. We have three presentations this evening. The first item is E1 Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District Update. We would like to invite Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District Board Member Karen Holman and Margaret McNiven to make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, council members. And thank you for giving us time to make this presentation about Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District. I am Margaret McNiven, and I'm here tonight with my colleague Karen Holman, who is also on the Board of Directors. Also with us is Josh Hug, Government Affairs Program Manager at MidPen. We are here tonight to provide a brief update on the district and highlight some of our projects that might be of interest to the citizens of Menlo Park. First, a short history. Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District, also known as MidPen, is a public agency created by voters fifty-three years ago. In 1972, the result of a grassroots effort by local citizens who wanted to preserve room to breathe after watching the Santa Clara Valley fill up with development. Six years later, the voters of San Mateo County approved a similar measure, extending the district into San Mateo County. The focus was, and still is, on land preservation and protection. And public access would be limited to ecologically sensitive uses. The lands were to become natural preserves and not parks with campgrounds, paved roads, and other amenities. Then in 2014, some forty years later, the voters passed Measure AA, another parcel tax, which provided funds for maintaining these lands in a responsible manner. This was a huge validation that voters do appreciate the natural open spaces around them. And so the mission became, it's up on the screen, to preserve and protect. I can't see it from here, I'm sorry. But it's there. And we also support agriculture on the coast. So, let's see if I can do this. Wrong way. Today, we manage some seventy-two thousand acres in an area stretching from Highway Ninety-two in the north down to the Sierra Azul Range in the south, and from the San Mateo coast in the west to the bay, where we have a couple of preserves. Most of the land is in San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties, but there is a small area to the south in Santa Cruz County. The land is divided into twenty-seven preserves and has some two-hundred-and-fifty miles of trails, of which sixty percent are accessible to bikes. A small number are dog-friendly. The trails are free and open to the public three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year, from half an hour before sunset to half an hour after sunset. On the coast, we manage about eleven thousand acres of grazing lands. There we go. Here is a district map showing its seven wards, each representing some hundred-and-ten thousand people. There is one board member for each ward. And Menlo Park is split among two wards, represented by Karen and myself. I've already mentioned most of this information. Headquartered in Los Altos on El Camino, there are over two-hundred employees, as well as a thousand wonderful volunteers who serve as docents and educators, help with trail maintenance, and put their backs into invasive weed management. There's one more thing I'd like to mention, and that is the difference between POST, Peninsula Open Space Trust, and MidPen. The two organizations are often confused. Basically, POST is our nonprofit and younger partner. Being a nonprofit, they don't have to go through all the hoops and regulations that apply to a government agency when purchasing land. POST sells its land to MidPen for management and maintenance. Cloverdale Ranch in Pascodera was acquired from POST last two years ago. So here, I have just a couple of pretty pictures to show you, to show you some nearby preserves. This is Windy Hill, which is just west of here. Ravenswood, we have a couple of very nice preserves down at the bay, one of which is Ravenswood Open Space Preserve, which has really become a nice, clean place to go. Here is La Honda Creek Open Space Preserve on Highway Eighty-four beyond Skyline. Here we have Montebello Open Space Preserve, which is that nice black mountain that you can see up there. Russian Ridge Open Space Preserve. This is the preserve that has the beautiful wildflowers in the spring. Definitely worth a visit. And Thornwood, which is at the base of, in the foothills, just by Woodside. I think that's it. Yes. So I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, who will talk about some of the projects that we do. Thank you.
Good evening, and as Margaret said, thank you for having us here. Again, it's been a couple of years since we've been here. So it's glad to be, I'm glad to be back. So this, as you see on the screen, is one of our projects. This is a San Francisco garter snake. It's an endangered species. And on MidPen lands and some of its partner lands as well, this is an endangered species that we're working to create new habitat and restore habitat for it, and other species also that are endangered. On MidPen lands is actually where some of the largest populations of this snake exist. So it's important work that we're doing. Something that sadly comes to all of our minds all too frequently is about, is wildfire resistance and resiliency. It's critical work that we're doing, and we're learning every day as we engage and encounter this activity. Fire is a critical concern in our area, as you all know. And we keep seeing reminders of how important it is to steward the land to limit the intensity and spread of fires. MidPen's Wildland Fire Resiliency Program is managed in partnership with CAL FIRE, local fire districts, state and county parks, and other organizations to make sure that we're applying the right approaches at a scale across municipal and district boundaries. The primary work you'll see in the open space is vegetation management. For instance, you'll see shaded fuel breaks. And increasingly, we're going to be using the prescribed fire method, going back to native Indian practices. This picture shows a prescribed burn last October in Sierra Azul, southeast of Los Gatos. Here, oops, I think I went too far. Here you'll see some of the elements of a wildfire resiliency program. On the left, you'll see the fire hazard safety severity, excuse me, fire hazard severity zone, or FHSZ. I'm not going to ask you to repeat that, because I'm not either. And this is state responsibility areas that were assigned by the state fire marshal. On the right are the key components of our Wildland Fire Resiliency Program passed in 2021 after the all-too-well-known CZU fire. Our program is a combination of these four plans. Vegetation Management Plan, which implements fuel reduction areas using a variety of methods. Prescribed fire Prescribed Fire Plan, that I mentioned a moment ago, which is controlled intentional burns to manage fuel and improve ecosystem health. Wildland Fire Pre-Plan, and this focuses on creating resource advisor maps. These maps are critical because they provide firefighters with critical information on infrastructure and sensitive resources, helping them suppress fires effectively while also protecting important areas. And lastly, the Monitoring Plan. This gives us a framework to track conditions and the effectiveness of our treatments. Basically, that the work we're doing, is it effective? And if there are improvements that need to be done, we can adapt these techniques in the future. Together, these four plans create a comprehensive and adaptive approach to wildfire resilience. This is showing the Parisma to the Sea Trail. I don't know how many of you are hikers or get out in nature. Betsy does. But this is the Parisma to the Sea Trail, and it will link California's coastline to the Bay Area Ridge Trail, a pretty ambitious project. Nevertheless, this trail will become a significant segment of the larger 40-mile Bay to the Sea Trail envisioned, a regional trail that would connect San Francisco Bay to the Pacific Ocean. Talk about ambitious. It's a multi-year planning process, as of course it is, and you all will appreciate, you know, as a public agency yourselves, how long processes can take and the public engagement part of it. MidPen, for instance, has had, over the last two years, we've had over 20 community engagement events. And in '23, the board approved the Parisma to the Sea Trail conceptual regional design alignment. And next will be the environmental review essential in all projects that have a potential impact, and certainly in MidPen lands with so many resources and such natural habitat. We certainly take great care in doing that. The proposed alignment will undergo probably moderate modifications to avoid sensitive habitat. The Bay to the Sea Trail, that I mentioned just a moment ago, on this map, you'll see this larger trail network from the Parisma to the Sea Trail, which is, Parisma to the Sea Project, which is envisioned to be the western portion of this trail. On the eastern side, the hope is to leverage, something that you all are familiar with, is a hope to leverage a portion of the Dunbarton Rail Corridor right-of-way to enable bicycle and pedestrian use. And the northern branch is envisioned to pass through Johnston Ranch and Half Moon Bay, with the southern portion hosting a trail that runs the length of Parisma Creek Redwoods Open Space Preserve. And this, as the staff and my colleagues know, this is my favorite project. It's long in coming, it's a very complex project. This is the Highway 17 crossings, and in particular, the undercrossing, from my perspective, the most important of this. We have a set of projects planned south of here, near Naxaln Reservoir and near Los Gatos, that includes a major wildlife undercrossing, which is intended to address a very difficult area on Highway 17, where there's high mortality from mountain lions and other species. I hope you haven't encountered this, but I'm afraid that many of us have. The crossing will provide a key link to help preserve genetic diversity from mountain lions in the Santa Cruz Mountains and to the east. They need this path to be able to migrate and create that genetic, keep that genetic pool healthy. At the same time, there are a set of projects are planned to make the Bay Area Ridge Trail continuous across that gap, connecting from Sierra Azul across Highway 17 to El Serena, and then down to Sanborn Park. Projects that are this complex, and because they involve Highway 17 and state highways, the projects like this are done in coordination with VTA. It's also partly funded by Measure AA, that you heard Margaret mention earlier, and we're also pursuing, pursuing a host of other fundraising opportunities. And we hope to begin construction in 2027. It'll be none too soon. We also at MidPen engage with many partnership organizations, or partner organizations. I won't go through all of these, but MidPen has partners, partnerships with local organizations for several years. Here, we're showing the organizations that we're currently working with, and to promote education and outdoor access opportunities for the local communities, these nonprofits serve. The Tier Three, which is the longest and broadest aspect of this, is a multi-year commitment and mutual consent, or content creation and speaking engagement opportunities. These programs, with groups like Latino Outdoors and Bay Area Older Adults, have been helping in a great ways to help MidPen serve a broader and more diverse community. This is someplace where I hope Menlo Park and all cities will really reach out and help by educating their community, by helping educate their communities. And this is rodenticide. Visitors to MidPen's preserves continue to spot sickly predators that exhibit signs of rodenticide poisoning. Many predators in MidPen preserves, including bobcats, coyotes, and raptors, prey on rodents, many of which have been exposed to rodenticides in nearby communities. Our staff is reaching out to surrounding communities, including Menlo Park, to encourage the use of non-rodenticide-based methods to control rodent population and to reduce the risk of exposure for local non-target wildlife. It's unfortunate that, from my perspective, speaking personally, it's unfortunate these products are even still available in local stores, but they are. We presented here last in 2013, and, excuse me, in 2023, and want to update you on the last 11 years since the passage of Measure AA. Measure AA was a $300 million bond passed by voters, thank you all for your support, to help realize the 30-year vision plan. The progress includes preserving over 9,600 acres, including, and again, I won't mention all of these, but we've opened four new preserves to the public. We've acquired the 5,100-acre Cloverdale Ranch south of Pescadero, a huge acquisition and several years in accomplishing that. We've opened 31.4 miles of trails to the public access, with 10-plus miles in construction, and 19-plus miles of new trails in the planning stages. And particularly important to Menlo Park and to East Palo Alto, we completed a bay trail connection at Ravenswood Preserve, establishing 80 miles of continuous bay trail access on the peninsula and to the east bay. Those are just some of the projects, and we're very happy to answer questions, should you have any. What we did bring for you all, too, is we brought something that's become very popular, our Preserve Guide. We've so far distributed over 10,000 of these. I keep them in my car because they're just widely and greatly sought after. So I will leave these with the clerk for you all, and staff, and any members of the public, and if you don't have enough, you want more, we're happy to make a delivery. So enjoy these, and I hope to see you in the preserves sometime soon. Thank you all so very, very much, and if you have questions, we're happy to answer.
Thank you both very much for the presentation. Are there any questions from the dais, or do we? And we should call for public comment, right, on this?
We need to. Yes, I can take it now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our presentation E1, Mid Peninsula Regional Open Space District Update, if you are in person, you can return a speaker card here to me. If you are virtual, please engage that hand feature now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our presentation E1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. So now, bringing it back to the dais, are there any questions? No, we'll see you in on Director Holman, Director McNiven, thank you very much for, for the presentation.
Thank you for having us.
With that, we'll move on to our next presentation this evening, which is E2 Annual Complete Streets Report Out. Here to make the presentation is Complete Streets Commissioner Jackie Seabrian.
Thank you. There it is. Okay. All right. Am I, I can go? Okay. Good evening, council members. I am Jackie Seabrian, ranking member of the Complete Streets Commission, which I just made up myself, I wouldn't say. I think I've just been on it longest, for now. Anyway, so, here we go. Maybe. Is it forward? No, that way. Sorry. I don't know how to work this. That's maybe my problem. Yay.
That one will go.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, we've been busy talking about things. We are currently, I think tomorrow night, adopting our next year's work plan, so I'm not talking about next year's work plan, just sort of a highlight reel of last year's work plan. So, you have all those things in front of you also, but, so that is sort of a summation of last year's work plan, and our goals and priorities, and how they lined up with council direction. Yeah, I think there are a lot of things that are on there kind of normally, but I'm going to move to more exciting things. So, Middle Avenue Complete Streets Project has been a topic on our agenda a lot over the last couple of years. It is really exciting to ride my bike down Middle and see all that beautiful new pavement, and, you know, all the nice paint, and I will look forward to sharing those bike lanes with lots of school kids and adults who use those corridors for work. So anyway, there are, I noted on the map, just as discussions that come up, there are some streets that are highlighted in pink that have, they're being looked at, that's just part of our process of evaluating streets, and, and we have had lots of public comment from those neighborhoods, so partly it's so that they know that we are listening to them, and as I understand, sometimes getting this, the slow street system restarted in such a way that makes it sort of database, so that we really know where the problems are, and we have the information to back it up, and so that we're not responding only to noise, but to actual, like, information about how cars travel. So, those streets are highlighted, I don't want to make it seem like we've solved any of those problems yet, but we're working on it. So, Pilot Project Design, Coleman Avenue Pilot Project. There have been a lot of interesting things that have come before Complete Streets recently. So, I have not yet ridden down the new Coleman Avenue. I've been a little out of town and in town, and, but it, it's on my list, so I'm looking forward to checking out the bike lanes, and this is an opportunity for me, I'm going to briefly editorialize, this is not, this is my opinion, but I do notice as a cyclist that across town, we allow a lot of car use of bike lanes, whether it is to park in them when they aren't supposed to because they just need to for a second, or whether it is to drive in them because someone's turning left that you want to go around. My experience is when someone's turning right, they don't veer into traffic, but they have no problem riding, driving in somebody else's lane of travel when it's a bike. So it's just a note that I find citywide. Okay, back to my Complete Streets hat. So, yeah, Coleman Avenue Project is moving along, we're waiting for the county to do its, whatever it's going to do with its section of roadway. And then, the next thing up, UC Berkeley Safe Truck Assessment. We got a grant, I think, we partnered with them to come and look at some sections of Menlo Park that were high-concerned corridors, and they came back with a report in September, which they presented, and projects from that report have been selected for grant funding, and having that report was really helpful for getting the grant funding, because it just provided all this extra data to prove why we needed the things we needed. So some of those things are moving forward as well. And then Willow Road Class Four Bike Lanes, I'm super excited to see this. One of the things I would love to see our city look more at is what I think is going to be happening over here in this Willow area, where at least a portion of it, the bike lanes are going to be, like, separated from the roadway, and even on some part of it, like, raised, I think, closer to the freeway, I'm not sure. But I li, I love the idea of thinking about bikes as more like pedestrians than they are like cars. And so when we design our roadways, I would love to have us start considering not just slapping bikes on the roadway with the cars as a policy, but that maybe we can look at our streetscapes and find ways to make them wide enough to accommodate both, and I think in the sort of universal design, sometimes that has benefits for more than just who you intended. So it's just a thought about increasing the safety of biking, because if you will notice around town, there are a lot of teenagers still riding on sidewalks, and that tells us a lot about how safe our roads are, because, like, they're the least risk-averse people in our community. So if they're riding on the sidewalk, that tells us something. So, and the, oh, sorry, I went too fast. The citywide shuttle program, we also evaluated, and I believe I saw that we were, there was some grant funding available for like 75% of the, or that they received, but I think there's someone from staff that will correct me if I'm wrong about that. So that's kind of the highlight of what we had behind us. We have a lot of things coming up ahead of us, and the last thing I will point out is that we've had bike racks in the works all year, it's not in that presentation, but there's a subcommittee working on it. But also, like, that same lonely bike rack outside City Council has been there by itself since, like, 2018, and we have a zillion more bikes on the road since then, and some of these are, like, things that we could just fix. I mean, maybe not in 10 minutes, but, you know. Anyway, so thank you so much for your time, sorry for the extra editorializing, but I don't often get, like, the microphone and the clicker, so, thanks again. Any questions?
Thank you, Ranking Commissioner Seabrian, for the presentation. Let's go to public comment, and then we'll, we'll come to the dais to see if there are any questions.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our presentation E2, the Complete Streets Commission Report Out, if you are in person, you can return a speaker card to me here at the clerk's desk. If you are virtual, go ahead and engage that hand feature now. Looks like we currently have three speakers, so this will be the final call for public comment on our presentation item E2. All right, we will start with Dean Levin, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Hello, good evening, mayor and council members and staff. Want to express thanks to Commissioner Seabrian for the presentation this evening about the Complete Streets Work Plan passed, and, you know, looking forward to the work plan for the coming year. Really glad to see the bike lanes on Middle, which took so much attention from the Complete Streets Commission and staff and City Council over time and happy that that is now in use. The mention of the bike lanes and of the, sorry, the bike racks in front of City Hall is very exciting, given that the bike racks in front of City Hall are filled up at meetings that, you know, have plenty of people at City Hall. Really extremely excited about the potential for the protected bike lanes on Willow. That's an extremely dangerous roadway. And anything that's being done to protect safety for pedestrians and cyclists there and, you know, at a high quality is, you know, really extremely welcome. For the coming year, and in the coming discussion of the work plan, I would like to express a hope that this is at a time when the commission and the city will start to consider revisiting the topic of bike lanes on El Camino Real. This is something where about a decade ago, the city did a million-dollar study that had came up with a recommendation for bike lanes. But the decision at that time was made to wait for the cities to either side of us to go ahead and make their decisions. City of Palo Alto, there's now the whole stretch from Palo Alto through Mountain View that has protected bike lanes. And Atherton is about to make their decision. And so now it seems like a good time to revisit here in Menlo Park. The executive director of Palo Alto TMA, Justine Burt, has been organizing a series of rides to try out Palo Alto bike lanes for Monday evenings in July. And they have been extended through August. So if you have not yet had a chance to try them out, I really strongly recommend trying it out to see what it's like, to see what you think about using it and for how such months might be useful in the Menlo Park community as, you know, we would consider potentially taking on that topic for the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Catherine Dumont.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and honorable staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, a native living in District Three, a recovering homeless teacher and a disabled bus rider. I also want to echo Adina's thanks for Commissioner Sebrion and the entire commission for all their work. It is so exciting to see the hard work being realized across our city. You can actually see our priorities for non-vehicle use in action. And with a middle school son, he totally gets that. So thank you. I do want to just make a comment about the Coleman Avenue Pilot Program. I submitted some feedback a couple of weeks ago when it was first rolled out. The stop sign is definitely effective and we should keep that. But long-term, to make the program effective for the, it's, you know, because it's an apartment row. So we have dense workforce housing right next to single-family homes. And we, I think we just can do a little bit better with working with those residents there to ensure that it's more of a seamless rollout, ensuring that the bicycles and scooter and pedestrian track, traffic is safe at all times. And then the last thing is just a plug for the coming priorities is yes, I live on Willow Road and we could, I don't know if you guys have driven through El Camino and Palo Alto or Redwood City and seen the designated delineated bike lanes. It's amazing. They're very different, you know, Palo Alto versus Redwood City. But I've personally experienced dooring on Willow Road on my scooter. I, aside from my surgery, I stopped riding my scooter because it was just so dangerous to be on a mobile device with vehicles, exactly, turning into the bike lane. So a lot of my neighbors that live on Willow Road, they, they wait in traffic to turn illegally left into their residence, either coming or going, right? And then people just automatically think it's okay to go into the bike lane. That's actually how I got my first ticket. So I do recommend us addressing that citywide as it is a problem that I've witnessed as well. Thank you again for all your work.
Thank you for your comment. And our next speaker will be Catherine Dumont.
Good evening, council, staff and commissioners. Just appreciation for all the work that the Streets Commission, Complete Streets Commission has done. It's so visible. It's delightful as a cyclist, as someone who prefers to, to not get in the car when I don't have to, to get around and to see the improvements. I bike on Middlefield into Redwood City now, which is something I wouldn't have done before the bike lanes. At least they get me part of the way feeling more protected. And then I hit Fair Oaks. But, you know, and I have been down to Coleman and the difference is night and day with, with the sightlines being improved with, without the car parking. And also just another plug for El Camino Real Bike Lanes. The last night's ride, we, we had encountered folks commuting on El Camino Real now. And we spoke with a gentleman yesterday who works at Rivian and commutes 10 miles, down to 10 miles a day down to Mountain View on the bike lanes. And he just, he just moved here from Germany two weeks ago. And he was saying, wow, it's just great that we have this and you guys have this infrastructure here. It's just, I'm so impressed. And we were sort of laughing to ourselves because it was a long road to get those bike lanes in. And it's so interesting to see someone else's perspective coming in and saying, whoa, this is so cool. You guys have your act together. So anyway, appreciate all of the work again. And bike racks indeed would really help. The more frequent, the more accessible and convenient it is to park a bike and pop into your favorite restaurant or store, the more you're encouraging folks to do that and to feel like the city prioritizes that. Palo Alto just installed a ton of bike racks after a lot of public feedback on that, too. And my biggest, I guess, my big priority would be trying to make it feel safer to go into downtown Menlo Park once you cross over El Camino from Ravenswood. It feels very dangerous sharing the road with parked cars, side streets and parking lots. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. All right, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Corcoran, and thank you, everyone who provided public comment. Bringing it back to the dais. Are there any questions for Commissioner Sebrion? Councilmember Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. And so Commissioner, thank you very much for representing the whole team. And first, a big shout out to all the work that's been done because I, being a small, small part of the Coleman project, I realize these things are a lot harder than they look on the surface. I had four quick comments or, yeah, four quick comments and then a question for you. If that was all right. One is on Coleman. I'm on Coleman. I drive every day. I agree with the comments. It's night and day. On the county side, I would ask, as much as you can, continue to work with the county. Supervisor Goucher called me last week and let me know they put the striping down. I actually saw it on the way here to council. So it's, it's small progress, but she's really championing that as a top project, as is CEO Calgi. So I'd encourage the commission to continue to collaborate as much as possible with the county because they are taking slow steps and they've made the first steps, I think it was as of this weekend. So not everything that we potentially want, but getting there. Also, the collaboration with Slow Streets. I hope that shows up in the work plan next year. I know we've heard a lot about that from members of the public, but I would encourage that. Also with El Camino, same thing. I actually was on one of Justine's bike rides. I have to say, it's probably the safest I've ever felt on a bike in the city. They are amazing. So I will just echo the, if you haven't done it and you're worried about El Camino, which I was before I got on it, it's something that I hope that the commission will really take up and, and look at because it's incredible, it feels incredibly safe. Last two things. One is, I hope that as a previous chair of the EQC and the environmental quality work, I still pay a lot of attention. I'm not the official liaison of the city, but I still tune in all the time and watch and see the progress. I would just want to make sure that with the vehicle miles traveled work, that there's a really strong collaboration between Complete Streets and EQC because it's all, it's all the right work in the right direction. So I hope that that also shows up as a real collaborative effort moving forward. And then I think the last thing is I just hope you get a chance at least once a year to step back and look at the whole city. And if not, you know, that might be something that we would request, that you look at the transportation needs and, and really help guide some of the work that's going on as opposed to maybe having to validate project by project. But we're going to have a lot of big transportation needs coming forward with all the development we have. So hopefully the Complete Streets Commission can play a big role in that. So anyway, off my little soapbox. But thanks for all the work that you do. Really appreciate it a lot.
All right. Thank you so much for your comments.
Yeah, and I meant to say, are there any council comments or questions? You can also just make comments. Were you, yeah, Vice Mayor Nash?
I will not repeat some of what's been said already, but just wanted to thank the commission and staff. I know there's been a lot of challenges with staffing and headcount and a lot of turnover. And it's really exciting what you have done and looking forward to next year.
Me too. Thank you.
Thanks. I'll just add, it's clear that you are personally really excited about your work as a commissioner and what comes under the scope of Complete Streets. And so sitting as a member of council, that's always great to see and really sort of validating and reaffirming of the really high caliber group of people we have in our, in our city and their willingness to volunteer their, their time. So really appreciate it. And again, definitely hats off to all of the advocacy and the review that the council, that the commission has, has provided to a number of products, projects, whether it's Middle or Coleman. I will say, if I were giving some general, it's like anything, you know, Coleman provides a really good example because again, that was bogged down for a long time. And I remember I tuned into, I forget the name of the county board. It's a pedestrian bike, whatever. And, and where they were taking up this topic. And, and I was, and I think I said it to the city manager maybe some days after, like, if we're waiting on them, if we're waiting on the county, then nothing's going to happen on this project. And so what happened there was Menlo Park took the position of like, well, we're going to do what we can do, what we think is best for our part of the street. And, and we're not going to tie it to the county. And so I do think like, as we look through these projects and, and what can push things along, it has to be sort of, not everything is like that. But thinking like that, like, hey, what, what moves us along? And it was clear that the county was in their own way. And it's great to hear that Supervisor Goucher is advocating for this and there has been stripes. But it was clear that like the county was going to do an analysis paralysis on this forever. And we weren't going to get anywhere, even anywhere to say that like, hey, let's try stuff and maybe that doesn't work out. Right? And so, and so I just think that that has to be how we like approach a lot of, a lot of things, a willingness to, you know, to prioritize getting stuff out and seeing, seeing how it's received.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I, I agree. And I think we're going to have, we have plenty of thorny things to look at and push the envelope on in the future. So I appreciate that. And also, one last plug. I will say, like, one of the benefits of your below-market-rate housing program is great, engage residents like me. So keep supporting your below-market-rate housing because that's why I'm still here. So thank you so much and I appreciate all your time.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. With that, we'll go on to the final presentation of the evening, E3 Annual Parks and Recreation Commission Report Out. Here to make the presentation is Parks and Recreation Commission Vice Chair, Joseph Grass.
So good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, council members Schmidt, Taylor and Wise, and members of city staff. I'm Joe Grass, Vice Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. I'm a 30-year, 30-year resident of Menlo Park in District Three. I've raised three kids here. And my youngest is a sophomore. My daughter, she's at Menlo Atherton High School. And they've all gone through the wonderful school system here in Menlo Park. I'll be presenting an update on our commission's 2024, 25 work plan. And I'll be showing some photos of some of the fun events and activities through the year. So our primary goal, our primary goals, number one is to provide a public forum. We really need to be responsive to the public. Menlo Park is an amazing place. It's just a jewel. We have amazing facilities. I've gotten to know really wonderful city staff. So our commission's mission and my personal mission is to really reach out to the public and make sure everyone in the city is being served and included. It's, you know, really important thing. We need people to feel like they can speak to us. People feel like they're heard. And then also hopefully people feel like their voice really matters. And then to work with city staff and make recommendations to city council and just try to make everything work. The other goal is supporting ongoing activity at our Bell Haven Community Campus. Again, it's a great facility, wonderful staff. And our commission really is trying to keep our eye on the ball as far as adjusting how this facility is actually serving the community now that it's up and running. And, you know, it's, as you know, it's very important to keep, keep our eye on the ball and see exactly, measure what's going on there. And I'll get into that some, a bit later in our present, in my presentation. And then next, we're also reviewing progress towards the goals in the 2019 Parks and Rec Facilities Master Plan. So additional goals include, commission members are trying to tour facilities and get to know staff that work there. We're addressing maintenance and upgrade issues. And we're getting regular staff presentations and reports. Along those lines, let me extend our commission's thanks to city staff that work side by side with us at our meetings. Some of them are here tonight. Sean Reinhardt, Nick Svegda, Tricia Mullin and Ashley Walker. They're at our meetings and they're just a great partner for us and the commission to help get some of our newer members up to speed and figure out how everything, everything works in the city. Other things we do is review department budgets, review, update and update public policies. And another important one is our 12-month schedule of, of our issues on the agenda. We review that every month. If something comes up in the city, there is some issue or members of the public come and speak to us. If something comes up in the city, there is some issue or members of the public come and speak to us. We try to work with city staff to, you know, speak to them about what the issue might be and then put that on the agenda at the appropriate time so we can discuss it with it with the commission. So our agenda is really a living document that we really want to keep responsive to what's going on in the city, but also keep things planned ahead of time so that we know that they're coming up and to kind of prioritize things. We're trying to develop synergies with other city departments and have them present to us. And additionally, we're we advise on the development and modification of recreation programs and the facilities to meet the community the community's needs. And there is a photo of basketball and some, I actually need to go work out more, so that's a good reminder. And we act as a public forum. So we have we get feedback from public commenters. We have joint meetings with the Library Commission where we get some of those comments. Some recent topics have included aquatics, pickleball and tennis, the athletic fields and Bedwell Bayfront Park. For example, pickleball and tennis that's coming up on our agenda. We want to take another look at trying to holistically deal with all racket sports in in Menlo Park and plan for that. Things change in communities about what the community is interested in. New things come along, so we have to really adapt and listen to the community and try to juggle what all the activities we're doing in Menlo Park and share space. Bedwell Bayfront Park, we had a group, Friends of Bedwell Park, come speak to us a couple of meetings ago, and there's a lot of use going on at that park, and there were some issues about maintenance. I actually use the park myself. I do a lot of nature photography out there. The place is amazing. And we might need to do some maintenance there. It gets a little muddy and we want to have it accessible to kids with stroll parents that bring their kids with strollers and and so on. So that's just just some of the issues we're we're dealing with right now. Regarding aquatics, so I know the city council is dealing with this issue, and I want to say we in the commission, we really appreciate your your effort on this issue, and we know you're very focused on this. I just want to say, the commission wants to say, we've been hearing a lot from the public and at our last commission meeting, we were discussing this. And as a commission, we urge you, the council, to work with Menlo Women's Board to try to minimize the disruptions to service at Burgess and Bell Haven Pools. And Menlo Park citizens have really expressed some hardship and discontent about the ability to resolve the issue. That said, to to steal a quote from Mayor Combs earlier in the meeting, I think we as a commission, I want to say to the public, we hear you. And I think the city council hears the public as well. So I just wanted to let you know that, you know, just bring this up as an issue and we, as a commission, just want to say, we're confident you can resolve this and let us know as a commission how we can help you. So and I really mean that. Thank you for your hard work on this. Other things we do we to reach as far as a public forum, we do surveys. In March, we advised on a citywide survey of Parks and Rec Facilities and reviewed the survey results in May and July. We're still working on really sorting through the data and analyzing prioritizing issues. Staff did a great job of reaching out and administering the surveys and getting a lot of comments. So that's one way to get some information. And then in November, we reviewed a citywide survey of aquatics. And there is the Easter egg hunt. So another goal, goal two, overall goal is to support and advise. So it's very important for us to keep a focus on how the public's engaging with the Bell Haven Community Campus. And staff just presented us an update on operations and feedback from users is being collected and reviewed on a monthly basis. So as far as another overall goal we have is reviewing progress. So as far as the twenty nineteen Parks and Rec Facility Master Plan, so we just received a presentation about the athletic field allocation process from some of the staff that actually deal with that. It's great to hear, okay, here's how people make a reservation. Here's how it happens. Here's what the issues are. We received an update on the Kelly Park Turf and Track renovation project in October twenty twenty four and received a presentation on the parks policy and enforcement in September of twenty twenty four. So some other areas of focus. So we've updated our PRC work plan. We've selected a new chair and vice chair. We've reviewed a request for proposal for Ranger Services. We have a park ranger that works at Bedwell Park. We're considering having a ranger drop in on some of the other city parks as well. So that's in progress. And lots of other things happen in the committee. People bring their in the commission, people bring their own experiences. So one of the commission members is a runner and just proposed we should do a five K run. So we just established a an ad hoc commission, and now we're planning a five K run. So let's see, I'd like to recognize the Parks and Rec Commission members from twenty twenty four, twenty five, and they've accomplished quite a lot. We now have a lot of new members. I'm actually tied for second as far as seniority, having been on the commission for fifteen months. Our senior members, our chair, Juanman Lee, who's been in the commission just a little over two years. And we are focusing on onboarding commissioners. You know, to be honest, we're lacking some institutional memory. And we're trying to bring the new members up to speed. The city staff is very helpful with this. And personally, I'm just encouraging new commissioners to just speak up during meetings and you know, I'm really glad our, you know, last meeting went two hours. We had a lot of discussion, and I think that's really important to make the new members feel like they should use their voice and get involved in discussions and make them feel welcome. So I I think the group we have now is very passionate about serving the community. We have a lot of energy. And we're going to do our very best to engage with the community. It's been a pleasure to have joint meetings with the Library Commission and talk about common interests in the city with them. And importantly, I'd like to thank the Youth Advisory Committee. They're doing a great job. Our commissioners were very impressed with their work and their presentation to us. Going forward, we're going to encourage them to give us a bit more direct feedback when they talk to us, just to ask them, hey, we want to hear from the youth in our city and tell us as a commission, how are we doing? What's your experience with Menlo Park Services and how would you improve and fix things? Moving forward, we're focused again on continuing support for the Bell Haven Community Campus and community services and recreation services across Menlo Park. And we're looking forward to city council's feedback or tonight, anytime. And thanks very much for your support, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you for the presentation. Let's open it up to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our presentation, item E three, the annual Park and Recreation Commission report out. If you are in person, you can return a speaker card here to me at the clerk's desk. If you're virtual, go ahead and engage that hand feature now. And this will be the final call for public comment on presentation item E three. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you for hearing. Again, thanks, Vice Chair Grass. Are there any questions or comments from the commission, council member Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor. My night to be talkative, I guess. Just to, thank you, Vice Chair Grass. And again, appreciate all the work of the commission and and staff and tons of great progress. Two, just things stood out for me, and I wanted to express appreciation and hopefully continuance of the work. One is working cross-commission with the Library Commission. I know when I was on EQC, Rachel and the team and I talked a lot about how we worked across commissions. So it's it's encouraging to see that happening, and I would hope we can continue that. And then just a second call out with the Youth Advisory Committee and a lot of appreciation for the work to engage youth. And we've seen them a number of times and have interacted with them. So thanks for the work on that, too. That was it. Thanks. Yeah, we had a lot of questions for them when they came. We were just like, wow, there we want to hear more from this this group of of young people. So yeah, it's very encouraging.
Thanks for the the comments, Councilmember Schmidt. Overall, very much appreciate the the presentation. I definitely think that as it relates to the city's park and recreation offerings, it was certainly at a a peak and apex. This year, there was lots of robust offerings, whether it's the community events, the city like actively taking on responsibility for the egg hunt, whether it's things like the the Fourth of July parade, it is is and festival. It's it's really clear from my perspective that when it comes to Parks and Rec in general, that the the city is really hitting its stride following the pandemic. And yeah, I think we're still it. It's a big deal when the things that you do, you can't do anymore as an organization, and it takes a while to sort of to get back there in many respects. And from my my perspective, it's clear that the the city and so certainly recognition to the commission, to staff has really, like I said, taken great strides and and really having robust offerings when it comes to to Park Parks and Rec. I know I'm the liaison to Parks and Rec Commission, and it is on my to do list to to schedule time with all of the commissioners. I will, I promise, get around to that really soon. But but yeah, I really appreciate the 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 passion and interest in the work and the presentation today.
Great. Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll conclude our presentations for this meeting. And speaking of commissions, we'll move on to Advisory Board vacancies and appointments. F one, consider applicants and make an appointment to fill a one to fill one unexpired vacancy on the Housing Commission. Here to introduce the item is Deputy City Clerk Sandoval.
Good evening, City Council, staff and members of the public, both in chambers and online. I am Sarah Sandoval, Deputy City Clerk. And for item F one, staff recommends that the City Council consider applicants and make an appointment to fill one unexpired vacancy on the Housing Commission. Upon receiving a letter of resignation from a member of the Housing Commission, the City Clerk's Office conducted a special recruitment from June seventeenth to July thirty first, culminating in six applications received, which are included in the staff report as attachment C. The appointment process as set forth in City Council Policy twenty four dash zero zero four, which is staff report attachment A, is for staff to ask each city council member for their nominations, with the number of nominations being limited to the number of vacancies. In this case, that'll be one. The candidate, the candidate that receives a majority of nominations will be appointed. If no candidate receives a majority, we will continue to ask for nominations until a majority is achieved. We will take nominations verbally by roll call, using legal first name with the mayor going last. Or if it is the preference of the city council, we can collect nominations by any alternate method that the city council directs. Lastly, if desired, the city council can also choose to extend the application deadline and make appointments at a subsequent meeting. That includes concludes my introduction. I'm happy to take questions or to open up for public comment.
Let's open up. Let's open up for public comment.
Wonderful. Okay, if I have anyone in the City Council chambers who would like to make a public comment on item F one, please fill out a speaker card at the back desk and bring it here to the clerk's desk. Anyone online who would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand using the raised hand feature at the bottom of your screen. And if you are calling in from a landline or cell phone, I'll have you press star nine now to indicate that you'd like to raise your hand. Okay, we have three hands raised for this item. Our first speaker will be Teresa Fox.
Good evening, City Council and city staff. My name's Teresa Fox. I'm a sixteen year resident of Menlo Park in District Two. I'm also mom to an eighth grader and a twelfth grader who have both gone through the Menlo Park Schools. I appreciate your consideration of my application. My interest was sparked by participating in a leadership event with the San Mateo County Chamber of Commerce last winter, where, among other diverse citizens in our county, I learned a lot about the issues that are facing us in San Mateo, including housing. The event was intended to foster more involvement in local government, and this seemed like a really good first step. It's a topic I care passionately about as a longtime resident of Menlo Park, who has been a renter in Menlo Park during all this time. During my time in Menlo Park, I've been an active member of our communities, particularly just as a mom and in our schools. I worked in Menlo Park Schools for eleven years as a teacher and as a leader. And I'm just looking to expand my involvement in our local local government. I realize in the past, I haven't gotten involved because I wasn't a property owner. And I've come to the realization that my rent is still going to help pay property taxes, and I contribute to taxes through sales tax and other participation in our local economy. And I want to have a voice and and participate in our in our processes. So this is a spot where I wanted to get started. Thanks for considering me.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker will be Pam D. Jones. Pam, you should be able to unmute at this time.
Okay, try this again. Pam Jones, a longtime resident of Menlo Park, the Bell Haven neighborhood. And I support Charles Chapa. I have met him at numerous events in Bell Haven, which demonstrates to me he has an interest in finding out and better understanding the community in which he lives. So I'd like to see him considered for this position on the Housing Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Jenny Michelle.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, sorry. Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers and honorable staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, native living in District Three, chronic renter and recovering homeless teacher. I'm sorry I could not be there in person tonight. Personal comments. I very much appreciate. I want to thank all the residents who have come forward to serve on this extremely important commission. In reading the applications, I'm impressed with how engaged and clearly committed our people are to improving life for current residents and soon to become residents. One could argue that our bench is deep. I have learned over time that speaking for or against a candidate is not politically correct, so I just refrain from that practice. But full disclosure, I have worked at Alon Pennell. I did work at Alon Pennell for over four years. Currently, we have commissioners from District Three and Four, and it would be great to have rep from either D one, D two, or D five. None of the applicants acknowledge their affiliation to the lawsuit and or ballot initiative against our housing element and housing programs. And there are more than one. I would recommend understanding this relationship prior to voting for a candidate. Further, one thing I've noticed from engaging with these specific neighbors is that they have not read the housing element or understand the legal obligations we have to the state of California under that legal document. If they have, they have not demonstrated that to me in any way. I am concerned that they'll be tasked with providing recommendations to the council but don't have that basic foundational understanding. Mainly, the issue I have is related to the housing element programs, their specific timelines and their priorities. and their priorities with staff allocated time. More specifically, the AFFH, or Affirmatively Furthering Fair Housing and Fostering Housing West of El Camino, appears to be a challenging concept. My point is that for those commission, would-be commissioners, if you're going to be sworn into this commission, you might need to recuse yourself from engaging in a very many of these matters because you're actively supporting fundraising, defaulting those contracted housing programs. And so I therefore see that as a conflict of interest. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comment. This will be our final call for public comment on item F1. Okay, seeing no hands, I return it to you, Mayor Combs.
All right, thank you, Deputy Clerk Sandoval, and thank you to everyone who made public comment. Just a couple of things to clarify. If you're being considered for a commission position, you can make a public comment, just like anyone can make a public comment as a resident. It is certainly not required to make a public comment to be considered as part of this process and it's not formally a part of any consideration. And I don't even know if in our instructions, we make any reference to people making public comments about their own candidacy, but I just wanted to be clear about that. You know, you can do that, but there's no requirement, it's not formally a part of the consideration process. I did want to add, also, I appreciate that specifically regarding Ms. Fox, that she had an awakening and feels that her voice as a renter is important. When I first joined the commission, I was a renter. When I first was elected to this body, I was, I was a renter. And I think we're actually a majority renter council. So certainly renters, homeowners, residents, irrespective of your affiliation with a specific property, are welcomed and encouraged to be involved in our, in our government. And again, appreciate, to be clear, we ask applicants to provide specific information. No one has any obligation to identify anything specific to a lawsuit or anything. If there is some specific conflicts that, very specific that they have, certainly there is a process for, if those come up, for them to recuse themselves. And that's across the board. But we wouldn't be looking to tailor our review of candidates respective to lawsuits, measures, because there's always a lawsuit or measure in Menlo Park. And so, but very much appreciate the public comment there. With that, I think we will default to the process that the deputy clerk outlined, which is that you would, council members would nominate one person, because there is one vacancy, and we go around and if there were three nominations for at least one candidate, then that candidate would be appointed, correct?
Correct.
And, but if there is like a plurality or something of a non-majority, then you sort of, those who don't get any votes would be removed and you go through that process again until someone got a majority of the nominations.
If you could repeat that last part.
So, actually, I take that back. So you, if someone is, if someone gets three nominations, they're automatically get, get the position, correct? But if someone doesn't get three nominations, then anyone who gets a nomination then is considered for the position in a second vote process by the council, correct?
So I'll look to the city attorney and city clerk to confirm, but I think we'll leave the names up in full.
Or, or we can just do, start it.
City Clerk Karen did just confirm for me that that is correct, what you just said.
Okay, all right, Julie. All right.
So we'll see how this first round goes then.
All right, yeah, let's go.
I'm just going to pull up our voting tally, one moment. Okay, and by roll call vote, City Councilmember Taylor.
I'll nominate Charles Chapa.
City Councilmember Nash.
Charles Chapa.
City Councilmember Schmidt.
Also Charles Chapa.
City Councilmember Wise.
Charles Chapa.
And Mayor Combs.
Sometimes this is the downside of voting last, because there's, there's no, I will nominate Teresa Fox.
Understood, just one second. Okay. So with four nominations for Charles Chapa, Charles Chapa has been appointed to the Housing Commission. Thank you very much, City Council. City Clerk's Office will onboard our new commissioner and connect them with city staff.
Right, thank you, Deputy Clerk Sandoval, and congratulations to Mr. Chapa on your appointment to the Housing Commission. With that, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Under the consent calendar, the City Council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a City Councilmember, a city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So for any member of the public who wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar items, G1, City Council Meeting Minutes, G2, the Investment Portfolio Quarterly Report, G3, a resolution approving the 2526 investment policy, G4, an agreement for expanded services to additional city parks, and G5, an agreement for library books and media. If you're in person, you can return a speaker card to me here at the clerk's desk. If you're virtual, go ahead and engage that hand feature now. And this will be the final call for public comment on our consent calendar items, G1 through G5. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. Bringing it back to the dais, is there any comments or discussion on the consent calendar or is there any motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do we have a second?
I'm happy to second.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Taylor and a second by City Councilmember Wise to approve the consent calendar. Any further City Council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. And I would like to just take a quick moment to see if there is anyone either in person or virtually who are still going to require our interpretation services this evening. If you're in person, if you could just raise your hand. And if you are virtual, go ahead and engage that hand feature as well. So again, just trying to gauge if we have any folks needing the Spanish interpretation this evening for the remainder of the meeting. Okay, thank you. With that, I will return it to the mayor.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. We'll move on to our only regular business item of the evening. Under regular business, the City Council considers recommendations from city staff on policy matters or administrative actions that require City Council approval. The regular business item is introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 12.18 of Title 12 Buildings and Construction of the Menlo Park Municipal Code to adopt local amendments to the 2022 California Building Standards Code. Here to introduce the item is Sustainability Manager Rachel Londer and retired and new assistant community development director Ron LaFrance. Ron, I forgot all about you there, I'm sorry.
Very glad to have Ron here, thank you. Good evening, Mayor Combs, City Councilmembers of the community. Once again, my name is Rachel Londer and I'm joined with Ron LaFrance, who is serving as our Assistant Community Development Director. This evening, we will be presenting options to promote energy efficiency and electrification through local amendments to the Energy Code and Cal Green, the green building standards included in the California Building Standards Code. We'll start by sharing some background and we'll review the policy options, followed by a look at next steps and staff's recommendation, before we return it to City Council for discussion. There we go, all right. The California Building Standard Code regulates the construction of any building or structure in the state of California. Historically, the state adopts a new code every three years and cities have been able to adopt local amendments based on their topographic, geological, or climatic conditions. We've been working with our partners, Peninsula Clean Energy and their consultant TRC, as well as the statewide Reach Codes program team to prepare the ordinance options presented in tonight's packet. As we discussed at the July 8th study session, the city's ability to amend the state code is changing and we have a narrow window to adopt amendments that will be in effect for the remainder of the 2022 code cycle and can be adopted again for the 2025 and 2028 code cycles. Since the study session in July, we conducted a building professional survey, coordinated with community partners, and met with the California Energy Commission and California Building Standards Commission. And a culmination of those meetings and those different outreach activities led us to our staff recommendation, as well as as three options focused on residential construction for the City Council to consider this evening. These options are progressive in that they, they build upon each other. The first option being to expand our pre-wiring requirements that were adopted in January of this year. The second option is to expand the pre-wiring requirements, as well as require the installation of heat pumps, space heating equipment, instead of air conditioners, or the installation of air conditioners with energy efficiency measures, which we've abbreviated to AC to heat pump throughout the staff report and presentation. And that brings us to option three, which is staff's recommendation of the first two options, and then adding an additional energy efficiency requirement for major residential renovation projects. And so tonight's recommendation, which was, which is already read and we'll read it again at the evening, so I'll just leave it kind of on the, on the screen here, is really to zoom in on that option three, Attachment C, and have City Council consider conducting an introduction and first reading of, of that policy option. So I'll pass it off to Mr. LaFrance here to go into details on each of the options.
Yes, it's this bottom. It's the bottom, okay. Okay, as Rachel said, there are three, effectively three amendments being presented tonight. The first one is the expanded pre-wiring requirements, and those apply to single-family homes and ADUs. They include the installation of either conductors or electrical raceways to areas of alterations that include gas-fired appliances. And this allows for easier electrification in the future for the property owner. Additionally, the requirements include the installation of electrical raceway to new outdoor gas-fired appliances. There is an exception to these requirements, which is when the existing main panel does not have either breakers brace, space, or electrical capacity to support the electrical loads associated with the requirements. In this situation, the only, the only thing that's required is the maximum amount practicable, which is to say is we're going to put in as much as we can and that's it. Okay, I gotta, that one, there we go. No, that went the wrong way. Oh, no, now it's too far. Okay, here we go. Take my hand off the buzzer. Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, the, the second amendment is AC to heat pump, and this includes the installation of a heat pump in place of the air conditioning condensing unit when the existing air conditioning condensing unit is being replaced or when a new system is being installed to an existing home. There is also a provision for a, the same requirement if you're installing an AC for a newly built home, it needs to be a heat pump. There are several exceptions to this requirement, which include the allowance to install an AC condenser with additional energy efficiencies and a separate unreasonable hardship provision that exempts the project from the requirement when the differential cost between the installation of the heat pump exceeds 20% of the cost of installation of just the AC condenser. The heat pump provides the same level of cooling as an air conditioner and provides the flexibility for dual fuel heating system. It does not require the removal of gas-fired equipment. These requirements will help with preparation for the Bay Area Air Districts rule that prohibits the sale of gas-fired space and heating equipment, which begins January 1 of 2027. The third, third order, amendment, excuse me, is the, what's being dubbed Flex Path. Flex Path is an amendment that amends the California Energy Code, requires addition and alteration projects to single-family homes and ADUs with a project cost exceeding $100,000 to include two additional energy efficiency measures. Again, there are exceptions to this requirement that include having a home energy report that has a score of seven or higher for the existing home that, that needs to be submitted. There's also a three-part second exception. The most important part of that one is, again, an unreasonable hardship provision that exempts the project from the requirement when the cost of implementing the additional energy efficiency measures exceeds 20% of the project cost. There are some minor editing that went on last minute, apologize for that. The, there's a formatting error that occurred, some inclusion of Section 4 establishing the effective date of the ordinance, which is 30 days after the adoption and the implementation after the California Energy Commission approval, updating reference to subsection numbers and a topographical error of 510, which was intended to be less than or equal to 5%, and this is applicable to allowable duck, duck leakage rates. We felt that 510% was probably too much. So after the adoption, staff will file the ordinance, depending on which version is adopted, with Building Standards Commission or with the Building Standards Commission and Energy, Energy Commission simultaneously. The pre-wiring provisions will take effect 30 days after the adoption. Anything that has to go to the Energy Commission, which would be AC to heat pump and Flex Path, will be implemented upon the Energy Commission's approval. Again, staff's recommendation to council is to accept the cost effectiveness study. Waive the first reading of an ordinance adopting, oh, did I skip the timeline? No, I got it, okay. Adopting local amendments to the 2022 California Buildings Standards Code that include expanded pre-wiring requirements, AC to heat pump, and Flex Path energy efficiencies. Thank you, and Rachel and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for the presentation. From the study session, there were, there were lots of questions about what the city could do and couldn't do, and obviously you guys ran those all down, and very much appreciate the thoroughness in coming back with, with the, you know, clearly laid out options or recommendations. Let's call for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on item H1, introduce and waive the first reading, reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 12.18 of Title 12 Buildings and Construction of the Menlo Park Municipal Code to adopt local amendments to the 2022 California Building Standards Code. If you are in person and have not already, please emit a speaker card. And if you are virtual, now's the time to engage that hand feature.
And if you are virtual, now's the time to engage that hand feature. Okay, so it looks like we're currently at five speakers. So this will be the final call for public comment on our regular business item H1. All right. And our first speaker will be Audra Lowe, followed by Dashia Leeds.
Hello, City Council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Audra Lowe and I'm a 17-year-old living in Menlo Park. In 25 years, I'll be 42. I want you all to take a second and think about how old you'll be in 20 in 25 years. I say this because I'm deeply concerned about the world my generation will inherit and decisions and decisions like the one before you today will shape the safety, health and climate stability for our future. I'm here to voice my strong support for agenda item H1 and urge you to adopt option three of the proposed code amendments. These amendments are more than just technical updates. They're an investment in a future that is safer, cleaner and more cost-effective for all of us. By making homes ready for electrification, Menlo Park is helping ensure that future residents don't face metro massive retrofitting costs later. You're also protecting public health by improving indoor and outdoor air quality and moving us closer to our climate action plan goals. I especially wanted to thank staff for including a flex plan, which gives homeowners choices while still ensuring real environmental progress. I'm here today speaking before you because while I don't yet have the right to vote, I believe that youth voices deserve to be at the forefront of decisions like these because we will have to live with their consequences the longest. We're fortunate to live in Menlo Park, a city that has shown real leadership in climate issues. And now we have the opportunity to lead again by adopting forward-thinking, practical policies that make homes healthier, safer and better prepared for the future. With that, I respectfully ask council to fully support staff's recommendations and adopt option three. Thank you again on your time, your leadership, and thank you for listening to young people like me.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker will be Dashia Leeds, followed by John McKenna.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and Menlo Park City Council members. My name is Dashia Leeds and I'm the Conservation Coordinator for the Sierra Club Lemer Prieta Chapter. Our chapter is in strong support of the staff recommendation for option three, which includes the expanded pre-wiring, AC to heat pump and the Flex Path. I'd like to use my comment time today to briefly elaborate about our support for the AC to heat pump provision. The absolute best time for households to switch to a heat pump is when they need to replace their air conditioner. As mentioned by staff, these heat pumps come with the added benefit of providing both heating and cooling, negating the necessity to replace a gas furnace in the future. Heat pumps are extremely energy efficient, generally three to four times more efficient than conventional heaters and air conditioning units. This can save energy and help reduce monthly energy bills. This measure will reduce emissions and benefit public health by improving our indoor air quality. AC to heat pump will also future-proof Menlo Park by easing the transition to a future where gas furnaces are no longer sold, as described by staff and anticipated in the implementation of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Appliance Rules 9-4 and 9-6. Thank you to staff and council for your leadership in readying this code for adoption. This leadership is greatly needed in this time where climate action is under attack in so many areas of our society. We truly believe that cities can lead the way to inspire other jurisdictions to take action and we hope you approve the first reading tonight for option three. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker is John McKenna, followed by Angela Evans.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council members and staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is John McKenna and I currently serve as Chair of the Environmental Quality Commission. First, given the challenging constraints they were up against, I want to express a special thank you to staff for their excellent work in capturing as much of this opportunity as possible and going the extra mile to include the Flex Path scenario. Second, on behalf of my fellow EQC commissioners, the EQC fully supports staff's recommendation to pursue option three, which includes expansion of pre-wiring, air conditioning to heat pump and Flex Path. The EQC made these same recommendations at its May 21st meeting earlier this year. All three scenarios are needed to move the city closer to achieving its goals and in the process, these code amendments will create healthier indoor and outdoor air quality, safer buildings, more efficient systems, more comfortable living spaces and more climate-friendly homes in a cost-effective manner. As homes are transitioning away from dirty gas appliances to clean electric devices, studies from RMI and Peninsula Clean Energy have shown that energy costs will decrease. These energy cost reductions will be even greater for income-qualified households on PG&E's CARE program as this program discounts electricity rates three and a half times more than gas rates. Additionally, Peninsula Clean Energy, our regional clean energy provider, has programs to provide both technical assistance with the conversion to electric equipment as well as rebates and 0% financing to minimize and in some cases eliminate the upfront incremental costs associated with this transition. And importantly, these efforts to update building codes will nicely follow the leadership that the city has displayed in the work that it has done and continues to do to decarbonize its own municipal operations. This opportunity to advance the city's local building codes will bring meaningful short and long-term benefits to our communities. I also want to note that many other jurisdictions across the state are pursuing options similar to Menlo Park. The EQC and I urge the city to seize this opportunity while it's available. Our children and future generations will thank you for making the appropriate decisions that are necessary to preserve a livable planet. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next is Angela Evans, followed by Anne Pernick.
Hi, everyone. This is Angela Evans. I am a resident of Menlo Park and I am a director at Menlo Spark. So first, a big thank you to council and to staff for moving these pieces under consideration along. And thank you, staff, for doing the research and the tremendous legwork necessary to add Flex Path to your set of recommendations. Menlo Spark fully supports staff's recommendation, which is option three in its entirety. Now, I mentioned this at the last study session, but I do believe that it bears repeating. The latest 2025 PCE and Rocky Mountain Institute analyses of monthly utility bills post heat pump installation show that most folks will save about $20 to $30 per month on their utility bills. And this even takes into account the recent increases by PG&E to the electricity rates and still shows these savings. So the implication of this for renters who pay their own utility bills is that renters will likely realize immediate bill savings after their building owners install heat pumps. And as EQC Chair John McKenna just explained, these savings are even deeper for folks who are enrolled in CARE or FARA. Now, one of the keys to unlocking these savings is making sure that homeowners and tenants are on the optimal PG&E delivery rate structure. And there is a free program by PG&E called Home Intel, which provides one-on-one consulting over the phone in English and in fluent Spanish to help educate people on the optimal rate structures to choose. And Menlo Spark has referred this program both to Willow Court, which it decarbonized in the Bell Haven community a year ago or so. And I just referred our next multifamily decarbonization pilot to this resource as well. Another quick note is that passing staff's recommendation option three will also help our city comply with the Bay Area Air District Appliance Rules, as staff mentioned. And this is a very meaningful way for our city to show ongoing support for the Bay Area District Compliance Rules. And finally, since I have another moment, I just wanted to say a thank you to the youth commentator commentator, who, in my view, did a very articulate job of asserting their point of view in this context. And it's always lovely for me and I'm sure for others to hear the youth voice in these public meetings. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment. The next speaker will be Anne Pernick.
Hello, Mayor and Council, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Anne Pernick and I'm with Safe Cities at Stand@Earth. I want to thank staff, community members and the council for the work to get this item on the agenda tonight. At Safe Cities, we work with local governments around the US and Canada on policies to protect their communities and the planet. And these include policies to cut air and climate pollution from buildings. It's exciting to see Menlo Park looking at these new policies to do that. I want to urge you to pursue option three as recommended by staff, which is the most comprehensive and will have the biggest impact for the community on air and climate pollution, energy efficiency and bill savings. I appreciate your leadership and encourage you to choose option three as the path forward and support it through final passage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Okay, seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Thank you, Cor Corrin, and thank you to everyone who provided public comment. As I said earlier, we had this study session and discussed it extensively. And so my hope is that we can probably be efficient with the agenda item. Now, I did want to, but obviously, we'll we'll see how the council goes and what questions they have. And I'll kick it off with a couple of questions I had specifically as it relates to the Flex Path. Now, so the trigger is a project that costs $100,000. And my estimation, that is a very modest renovation in Menlo Park. That probably gets you a small additional bedroom, possibly. And I don't think it actually gets you that. It may get you a small office addition. And so, but feel free, this is, if you think differently, Mr. LaFrance, you're definitely feel free to push back. But so from my estimation, that's a really low trigger to then add on all of these other things, especially if we're talking about like a 1940s, early 50s house. There is no insulation in that stuff. And so all of a sudden, if someone wants to add on a really small office, that's going to become a much bigger than 100,000 project really quickly.
So you're correct that the $100,000 is relatively modest. I will note that there's a there's a escalator in there, so that dollar amount will go up every year. It's tied to the state cost of construction that's used for disabled access as well. So it does not remain stagnant. That said, you're only required to pick two of the options that are listed under Flex Path. So we're not requiring all of them. So in your example of a 1940s bungalow that may have insulation in the attic only, they could elect to they could elect to insulate underfloor. The walls tend to be a little little trickier, especially if it's lath and plaster. But there's other ductwork that can be insulated or replaced, things along those lines, and then they have to pick two.
But then, like, again, if we're talking about like an addition, like, right, they have to pick two, but that would be in relation to the whole house, right? Yeah, not not. So in theory, we would be expanding the scope of work for the house. And then, again, going back to our 1945s, and one in if you're just sort of trying to tack on a little office, now all of a sudden, you've got to break open the whole house possibly for for some of these other things. Like even if you're if if it's like, you know, choose your adventure, like, right, there is, you know, all of this stuff seems to be like breaking open something else in the remainder of the house. And so we are requiring with this, just to be clear, like, if I want to add on just a small office, which, like, I can promise you will easily be $100,000, then all of a sudden, there's all this other work I have to do to other parts of the house that maybe, again, we're not in that scope of work.
That's correct. That's why there is an unreasonable hardship clause that is set at a 20% threshold. So let's just say the the scope of work is $100,000. The most that is being required, if that that if the cost of implementing two measures exceeds 20%, so $20,000, then you are exempt from having to do this. And that that is put in there specifically to to for those types of projects that, like, I'm just doing this little thing and the cost of construction here is very expensive. And and the additional money becomes an unreasonable hardship.
And the the determination of that hardship is exclusively on the project, not on my own financial assessment of my own financial means.
It is a function of the project cost.
Okay, and so then I'm guaranteed, and so then if I do say that, like, any one of these two options, like, I'm gonna hit something greater than 20,000 additional costs to to implement them. Because again, like I say, you you start looking at the other part of the house. Very quickly, other things get get triggered that you can't just isolate and do do this, like, right? You can't just put in the incandescent, like, are the new light fixtures because all of a sudden, you're you're breaking the ceiling and and there are other things that come into play. I'm very familiar with that rodeo. So but so then if whatever two I choose or whatever is the least costly, I'm still hitting $20,000, then I don't have to implement them at all.
Correct.
Okay, um, okay, those are, oh, okay, yeah. Then I have one more question for the vice mayor wants to.
Thank you. I so I follow your concerns. And one of the things that I just am so grateful to staff for doing is the list of what you can do. For example, replace all screw in incandescent and CFL lamps with lamps of an energy efficiency of 45 lumens per wall or greater, per water greater. In other words, replacing light bulbs actually is one of the.
Were you talking about light bulbs? There are light fixtures. Are you just?
It says, replace all screw-in lamps with lamps, which I believe is actually a bulb.
The lamp would be the bulb, yes.
And another one is install R3 insulation on all accessible hot water piping. It's accessible. It's not saying you have to go into walls. So I saw this as a very, very reasonable approach.
I just want to understand that. So the light bulb, so I only have to, one option is I can go in and change out all the actual light bulbs.
Yes.
And that and and that's that's, okay. All right. And then my then my counterargument, well, then what's the value? Why are we regulating that?
The intent is very much to not be, in terms of cost, overly onerous, but to to achieve a higher energy efficiency for the structure. And so that that's the underlying intent. So yes, while replacing bulbs, LEDs are 10, 12, 15, 20, whatever they are, times, you know, maybe you have eight fixtures, so you're a couple hundred dollars for that. But blowing in insulation is much more expensive. So you're really, it it allows you that, that's what it's Flex Path. That's it allows you that flexibility to keep it kind of within your budget and 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 not pushing people into the 20%, so they're just exempt.
Yeah, but then adding, and again, I know I I say we should be efficient, so I I'm gonna be efficient and shut up. Just give me a few more minutes. But then adding another thing that the city then has to validate in some way, like, right? Here's here's another thing, like, right? In a process of which, you know, I regularly get feedback is already incredibly frustrating and onerous for residents, like, right? We're gonna add it. Now the city has to come out and you have to show them your new light bulbs as a part of the process. And and so, again, my final question, and so that's adds to my concern, but I think it's clear. Like, I was clear at the study session. I think no one's surprised about my thinking on this. But my one final thing is, is how does this intersect or interplay at all with state laws that are related to ADUs, like, right? And 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 those processes and making that easier? Like, how does? Like, what would the impact here be on a garage conversion? Do we know in any way or is there no impact or just?
The garage conversion has to comply with current code. So whatever is in effect at the time. And if you if you read through the exceptions, which are, you know, not fun reading. Let's just put it that way. So one of the the three-part exception is. So one of the three-part exception is an existing space heating that's not convertible to a forced air unit. Okay, the second one is the, the second one is the unreasonable hardship. And the third one is requiring the installation of measures that are either otherwise prohibited or applicable laws. And then there's one in here that's, somewhere along in here, it says that kind of, if all of these measures you already have to do, you're done. So let me rephrase that to make it a little clearer. If the conversion of an ADU involves all of these measures, then there's nothing more than you need to do. So in that situation, you're not, there's no increased cost at all. Because you're doing them because of state law.
You're doing them because of what?
Because of, because state law requires, the building code requires it.
All right, I'll open it up to my colleagues. Questions, comments, our motions, they're all.
So I just want to thank your exceptional work and effort on this to come up not only with what we had asked for, but also the Flex Path, which sort of was just a hope. And you've really produced a very robust ordinance, which I think will be palatable to people. I think one of the advantages of having this list is it actually, people may look at it and say, whoa, I can do that and that and that too. It'll, it's sort of, it's an education process as well as a process of achieving the energy efficiency that we're looking for. And I want to, I know, especially, I know both of you and other staff have had lots of other demands on your time. I've personally been in some meetings where people are talking about all the meetings they're having with you, Mr. LaFrance. And thank you for all the work that you did to get this together, as well as balancing it with everything else going on. It's really, really critical, and especially to our young people, as we heard from the voice, but to all of us. Thank you. And I would be, I will wait for others, but be happy to make a motion at the time. Thank you.
Since we're in good vibe modes, I wanna, that was, I'm gonna echo all of it, just because I think it's worth repeating. One is, you know, wow, I mean, the amount of hard work to pull this off in the kind of stopwatch timeframe we gave you. I just want to say I am really impressed. I read it, and like the vice mayor, it's not haphazard. It's very reasonable and doable. I also was, I looked at the list and thought it was fixtures. And I do appreciate the mayor's consistency on the issue. But I read this and I thought, wow, this feels very much in reach. It made me proud to feel like our climate leadership as a priority as a city that we're gonna be able to deliver on it. And that, that is something that other cities looked us to do. And given that things are under attack, and this may be one of the last chances, we have to do this for quite a while. I just want to say, I'm appreciative that staff really stepped up and delivered on what the city council asked. I wasn't sure if it could be done, yeah, and then some, as the vice mayor said. So I wasn't even sure it could be done, but I will continue the good vibes and just say a sincere thank you.
So just one more comment, and that's, we are talking a lot about climate action, and this is for the climate. It's also very, very important for individuals' health benefits in the indoor air and what we are trying to achieve with the environmental justice element and throughout the city. So it really will make a difference for individuals and their health. Thank you.
Before we go to the motion, I'll just say, my skepticism remains. And as I said at the study session, I prefer paths that incentivize residents to make what we would say is the right choice versus regulating it. But appreciate that I think the council is gonna go in a different direction tonight. I think we have a first from the vice mayor. We have a second too. All right, well, then I'll leave it to the clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So I do have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash and a second by City Council Member Taylor to accept a cost-effectiveness study and introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance adopting local amendments to the 2022 CBSC and Chapter 12.18 of the Menlo Park Municipal Code that expanded pre-wire requirements, installation of heat pump space heating equipment instead of air conditioner, or installation of air conditioner with energy efficiency measures, expanded energy efficiencies for single-family alterations and additions, and include the following modifications. Number one, in Section 4, the effective date of this ordinance shall be in effect 30 days after the date of adoption and implementation upon the California Energy Commission's approval. Number two, Section 4.507.3, there's a typo that should read less than equal 5% opposed to 510. Number three, updating section numbers for all attachments. And number four, there are minor formatting changes for consistency. Any further city council question or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with Mayor Combs dissenting. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen, and thank you, Ms. Wander and Mr. LaFrance, for the presentation and for all of the work between the study session and this meeting. While we were on break, it was clear you were not on break. So very much appreciate all the hard work and effort here. We'll move on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to the city council and staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member or staff, city staff member or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment on the informational items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our informational items, I1, the preparation of a comprehensive cost of services study, I2, the police department quarterly update, I3, short-term rental compliance update, I4, city council agenda topics. If you're in person, you can return a speaker card here to the clerk's desk. If you're participating virtually, engaging that hand feature, calling in, please press star nine now. And this will be the final call for a public comment on our informational items I1 through I4. Seeing no hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. We'll move on to city manager report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Welcome back to the dais from the break that you referenced a minute ago. And I'm sure there'll be some city council member reports. I did want to recognize one person from attendance earlier this evening. Our fire chief, Menlo Park Fire Protection District Chief Lorenzen was in the audience. Thankful for him, for his presence. He's a great partner. Just wanted to recognize the strong relationship there. And then I did want to put a plug in for the final summer concert, tomorrow evening at Fremont Park. So a great, great way to welcome people back into town that may have been out of town and a great wrap-up to the concert season. So with that, that concludes my reports.
Thank you for those reports, City Manager Murphy. We'll move on to city council reports. Are there any city council members that would like to provide any reports since our last, our last meeting? I'll start on this. Vice Mayor?
So I have three reports. One is from Peninsula Clean Energy. We had a meeting on July 24th where we had a long discussion about the HB1 reconciliation bill and the Trump administration executive order and the impacts on Peninsula Clean Energy's procurement and programs. It was a fascinating discussion. And thankfully, Peninsula Clean Energy has been doing, the procurement department has been doing a lot of long-term projects. And so we are hoping that it will not have a huge effect on our electricity rates or on the, on access to clean electricity. We also approved, we sped up and approved two power purchase agreements for solar plus storage. And we were able to, the staff was able to get, move those projects forward so that they will fall within the requirements before. There's certain requirements where you have to have projects up and running, started and then up and running within certain time periods. And the staff there has done an incredible effort getting some solar plus storage projects up and running, especially before the battery tariffs start. I also had a resource and management climate protection committee meeting where the sustainability department talked about electrifying small residential buildings, which is similar to what we're doing here. And also where PG&E is working on doing indoor air quality for small restaurants and small kitchens. And the Bay Area Basca did a drought report at that meeting. And just sort of a shout out that if anyone has a chance, I had no idea that the CCG committee, basically you get presentations all the time, which are just fascinating. And there's, it's a minimal amount of work. It's extremely interesting. And if, as other opportunities open up, I highly recommend taking a look at those. And then finally, there was a Basca, I had a Basca meeting, at which point we're discussing strategy 2050 and sort of looking at long-term water needs across the region. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Right, I will just report out, this, last week, we had National Night Out. And I know staff and the police chief was here earlier. And the police chief and other public safety professionals were out and about for both some of the public events and the neighborhood events. And so while I was not in town, my understanding, what I've heard is that it was a great solid attendance and great events all around. And so wanted to acknowledge that. As speaking of out of town, I wanted to acknowledge that at the end of July, I met with Mike Cupboard, the mayor of Menlo Park's sister city, Galway. And one of the other counselors in Galway, Eddie Horr, who was previously mayor and is the last mayor of Galway to visit Menlo Park, I think it was two days, excuse me, two years ago. And so it was, and this meeting took place in Galway, in Ireland. And so it was a pleasure to meet with them and to restart the tradition of Menlo Park mayors traveling to Galway. It was a thing that Menlo Park mayors did for some time pre-pandemic. And so, and so, yeah, so it's really great and to fill it, visit Menlo Village and Menlo, Menlo Castle, which actually the correct pronunciation, the appropriate pronunciation in the native tongue was Menlok. But the English sort of heard Menlo, or they just wanted to say Menlo. So when the locals said Menlok, they turned it to Menlo. And so, and so this is how we ended up with Menlo. And of course, there were some immigrants from the Galway area of Ireland that were key to the establishment of Menlo Park. So it was a great opportunity to meet with them. Like I said, spend some time with them and to spend some time in Galway. And so those are my report outs. With that, I will adjourn the meeting.